Good afternoon. I'm now going to call the Wednesday, November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of the Norfolk County Commission to Order. On Wednesday, March twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, Governor Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, an act making appropriations for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold remote meetings by suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, that's General Law, Chapter Thirty, Section Twenty. That action was effective immediately, extending the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Would you stand and please join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to call the roll, Commissioner Stady.
I'm present, sir.
Commissioner Collins?
Present.
And Commissioner Shea is present. Thank you. Number three on the on the roll is Executive Session pursuant to Master on Law Thirty A, Section Twenty-one. Do you have a motion to go into Executive Session?
I make a motion that we go into Executive Session pursuant to Master on Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-one A, subsection three, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining and litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body in the court here, so declared.
Second that motion, as read.
Motion made and seconded to go into Executive Session. I have declared that it's necessary for purposes of litigation, collective bargaining. I'm going to take a roll call vote, Commissioner Stady?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Collins?
Yes.
And Commissioner Shea? Is he asked to go into Executive Session? I will say at the outset, after Executive Session, we'll return for the remaining of our agenda. Thank you, we are in Executive. Okay. Hello, everyone, we're back on regular session on our November eighth, two thousand and twenty-three Norfolk County Commissioners Meeting. Before I go to item number four, I'd like to take a moment before we begin the other business of our meeting to acknowledge the over twenty-five thousand veterans who call Norfolk County home. On Saturday, we as a country and county celebrate Veterans' Day, but our gratitude for all who serve extends far beyond a simple one-day observance. Here in Norfolk County, we have a long commitment to addressing the vital needs of our veterans year-round and to that end. Thank you. Item number four, minutes of the open session meeting of November third, two thousand and twenty-three.
I move approval of the meeting minutes of the open session of November third, as presented.
Second. Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Minutes of the Executive Session Minutes, meeting of November third, two thousand and twenty-three.
I move approval of Executive Session Meeting Minutes of November third, as presented.
And held.
We're going to hold?
And hold, yes.
They will be held. Held until a time seen fit by the chairman to release.
Yes, sir.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Not to be released at that time. Number six, minutes of the open session meeting of November first, for approval.
Move approval of those, as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Number seven, Robert Pearson, R S V P Veteran Service Update. Come on in, Robert.
Hello, Commissioners, Bob. Please come over here to take this seat. Commissioners, I'm very happy to see you today, and I want to introduce you to Bob Marderosian, who is a Vietnam-era veteran who lives in Norwood, and he's a dedicated R S V P driver and is here to share his contagious enthusiasm.
Good to meet you, Bob.
Okay. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your service.
Hello, Bob. We're happy to welcome Bob Marderosian of Norwood here today. He's a veteran himself, and he's going to join Robert and explain the R S V P program, our Rides for Veterans Program. Go ahead, Robert.
Very good. So, in a nutshell, I want to say that given Veterans' Day being around the corner, we really want to highlight the Norfolk County Rides for Vets Program as a hugely important, successful program that wouldn't happen without you all. It wouldn't happen without the Norfolk County Commissioners. While we do receive a grant, it's not nearly enough to help run this program. And what it means is that we are thinking about and supporting veterans with free rides every day, every single day of the year. So, we are not just here to tout Veterans' Day, but to say we care about our veterans continually. There are no comparable programs in any of the county in the state. So, what you do as a county is unique, and there are very few in the country that do what you do. We give approximately ninety rides per month. Bob Marderosian has been with us for over five years and is going to share some of his experience and stories. I will lastly say, before turning it over to Bob, that we are getting ready to launch our fourth annual Holiday Drive for Active Duty Military. So, we do this every holiday season between Thanksgiving and New Year's, where all over the county, we do collections of up to five thousand personal care items that we then bring down for distribution to Cape Cod cares for our troops beginning of January for distribution to our veterans around the country. So, with that, I want to let you and Bob get to know each other a little, and Bob share his experience.
Thank you very much. I do recognize a few gentlemen from previous R S V P operations, and that makes me a little more comfortable, I'm not typically a speaker. What I wanted to do was to offer an idea as to the reach that R S V P has and the benefits that it exudes, actually. And I personally have seven members of my family have been in the service, and that carries a lot of weight for us. So, I'm extremely sympathetic with the vets. They've had their issues, whether it's getting to the hospital or needing support. And as a good example of that is Ted Muldoyle from Norwood is the, he takes care of the vets' responsibilities. And when I first started operating with R S V P, he's actually the one who said, "You need to get over there and work with these people," because you'll, not only will you enjoy the meetings with the people, but you'll be contributing without having to really go out and spend an awful lot of time elsewhere. And part of that was, I had a good friend of mine passed away on Cape Cod about four years ago, and it was, he had cancer, and he had been sick for about six months, and they had to put a ramp in at the house, and this is down at Cape Cod. They put a very expensive three-thousand-dollar ramp so he could get in and get out, and within six months, he passed. Well, unfortunately, his wife would walk out of the house, and all she could see is a ramp, and she couldn't get anybody to take it. Now, she let me know. I made a couple of phone calls, I believe that Robert was involved and Ted was involved, and there's a gentleman down at Cape that takes care of a lot of vets, and somebody got hold of him. I had that person interview with the wife, and within twenty-four hours, and I'm serious, this whole thing happened like that, and I explained to him, it was really, really distressing to her for almost four months. Every time she went out of the door, that's all she could see was her husband's ramp. Within twenty-four hours, they had that ramp removed and given to a volunteer or volunteered to get that to a vet. And that's a reach. I mean, that's a story that just hit me really, really where it counts. But driving for R S V P gives me a big benefit, too, because I get to meet all these people. And without going into all of the different things, I've run into a gentleman who was an ex-marine, worked during the war in Korea, and his responsibility was security for communications and things like that. The part of his responsibility was also to take when there was aircraft coming back in after going into North Korea. When they came in, his responsibility was to get up on a ladder and get the pilot's name and his serial number so that they could match it up with a jet that they were in. And he was telling me all this story, and we're driving into West Roxbury, and he's telling me this story, and he says, "Well, you know, one day, there was a jet that landed, and I pulled up with my ladder and I walked up the ladder, and I said to the pilot, I says, 'I need your serial number and your name,' and he gave him a serial number, and then he says, 'And your name,' and he said, 'Theodore Williams,' and the guy almost fell off the ladder. It was Ted Williams."
We don't want that to happen.
It was Ted Williams, and it was a very, very touching thing to me that I'm sitting there talking to this gentleman, and he knows. I happen to have a book by Ted Williams, Fishing the Big Three, and I gave that to him along with another book that said, "It's Only Me," and that was a Ted Williams history from the time he was a kid all the way through Korea, and he was actually hit in northern Korea and crash-landed. He could have gotten out of the, you know, gotten out of the jet, ejected. He could have done that, except he's such a tall man that if he did it, he would have destroyed his knees as he went out.
I read that.
Yeah.
I'm trying to find the book I read with Ted Williams. I'm listening to you.
Well, and that whole book contains five different interviews with Ted Williams that he did over the years with Doug Underwood, and these were all recorded live, usually at a pool. And I like to tell people, when you hear this Ted Williams telling a story about this, that, and the other thing over the period of years, in every one of them, you can hear the ice. And he was at a pool, and you just know he's sitting there with Doug Underwood having a cocktail, and he's able to kind of sit back and give his story. So, I managed to give that gentleman the book, so that was a pretty good thing. Other than that, I tend to go on and on, and I don't want to do that, but the reality of it is that I gain, and I'm sure a lot of people say the same thing, I gain so much with the opportunities that R S V P gives me, and the reach for R S V P is so good that, you know, I know that we're accomplishing an awful lot, and just the consideration of giving me five minutes, so I appreciate it, and I need you to know, this is really a great outfit.
I suggest, if you're willing, maybe just to share a little bit about some of the recent experiences with a couple of the vets that you've worked with, if you want.
Well, just briefly, I know that R S V P took care of a gentleman, Lester Liebenbaum, and I hadn't realized when I started taking him to his hospital in Boston, I hadn't realized he had already been with you guys for a year and a half, two years, and we spent, I spent basically one or two days a week taking him into Beth Israel and got to know his family really well, found out that they really knew what R S V P was because of Robert, and he got to the point where they were just not going to be able to do any more for him, and they took him into Norwood, which happened to be an arrest home that my mother-in-law was in for seven years. But he was there, I went in the first day he was there, and he was very cognizant, he was alert, and he must have been serviced with some pretty good drugs at that point. But we talked, and I left, and the next day I went in to drop off some items, and he was tired, and he was gone. And, you know, you do two years of support for that group, that's a very difficult thing to deal with. Last thing I'm going to say is, I am amazed at how many women, both servicewomen and wives of the servicemen who passed, I'm amazed at how many of them just are benefited by going to the vets or going to the doctors, that sort of thing. And that's only because R S V P is there to work with them, so that's really.
Thank you, Bob. I want to say to, Bob is humble. I mean, the amount of outreach he has shown in going to visit people, speaking to them on the phone, going, you have done beyond the call because of your level of care. So, I want to thank you for that.
Appreciate that.
I want to thank you for that.
Okay.
Lastly, Commissioners, I will say that we have been more successful at finding drivers in the western part of the county, thanks to your advertising of it on the website, but we still need some drivers, more drivers in Quincy area, and we are, we're always looking to spread the word to more veterans. We do let our V S Os know about it. Again, we're up to about ninety rides per month, made up of one-way and round-trip rides, and we also, I think we have about eighty-five veterans, widows, and a couple spouses of veterans that we give these services to.
If we want to support you, if I could.
Sure, go ahead, Commissioner.
I know this is a great, I was yesterday, I was very fortunate to attend breakfast very quick in Milton, and a very amazing Joe Cordona of the Patriots was there, such an impressive man. He has lieutenant, he's a lieutenant in the Navy, and did an outstanding job interacting with the kids, explaining about his job. Of course, they had a lot of football questions, too, but that was, that went with the territory, but they had other veterans there as well to talk about their years of service, and it was just a wonderful tribute, and a lot of us, I'm sure, will be attending different events this week. How can we, if somebody, I want to talk about this Ride for Vet Program. So, we want to advertise it for our vets and also to recruit riders.
Yeah.
Is there a number we should tell them to call? What number do we want to use?
Yeah, you could give them my number, if it's helpful, I could give you a flyer. I don't know what you want, I could give you business cards, I'm happy to supplement the information we have, but the phone number, I'll give it to John or Bill and pass it on to you.
Okay, that'd be great, thank you. I have a whole bunch going on this weekend, I try to hit as many as I can, and I want to push the idea of what we're doing, which is great. So, you're hitting to a ninety, you know, that's almost a thousand a year at that rate, which is phenomenal, but you opened the whole county, anyone can call?
It is open to the whole county. Unfortunately, we get calls from vets outside the county.
Oh, okay.
But we're so busy, we can't service everybody. I try to refer them to other places, but that's, this is for Norfolk County.
This is for any vet in Norfolk County.
That's right.
Who needs a ride for a medical appointment, doctor's appointment, things like that, that's fantastic. What a great thing.
I should say, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I should say to that effect, Ted Muldoyle sees all of the vets in Norwood. I mean, they all go through him because he has to, you know, help them get registered.
Yeah.
And I know that he offers up R S V P as an opportunity to get through the thing. It certainly wouldn't hurt to let them know that we appreciate that, and, you know, in any way that we can do that, because.
Is that Packy's brother?
Pardon?
Is that Packy's brother?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
But he's a terrific guy, and he spends time with the vets, and there's a lot of stuff that you have to go through in order to get registered, but he makes sure that they know R S V P is available, and I know that they've got Robert's number, so.
Great. Now, whatever we can do, I'm sure we'll get out there and spread the word, so that's great. Great.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Well, we have one more question, one more, and I have a Ted Williams story, but.
Oh, yeah, I gotta find that book.
There's a million Ted Williams stories there.
I gotta find that book.
They're all very gratifying, but I'm from Quincy, and as you know, what is known as Marina Bay today at one point was a naval air station well into the late fifties, it could have been early sixties that it closed, and then it was bought by the electric company, then it remained pretty fallow into the eighties, and they built what is Marina Bay today. And a lot of people served in a Navy Reserve Unit that was there, and it was also a Marine Corps detachment there. At the end of his career, Ted Williams was in that detachment. And there's a very good story that I've heard told by people who were there, who probably are no longer with us, but through various clubs in Quincy. There was no, you knew where you stood with Ted Williams at all times, good and bad, I guess, I never met him. I have a lot of pictures of him towards the end of his career, and the day that he mustered out of the Marines, all the upper brass had been petitioning him to go to Washington to go see the Commandant, but muster out. And the story is, and I can't say what kind of language was used, basically, he told them, "I've never met the Commandant in my twenty years. Well, if he would have come to Quincy to squonk him, that'd be great, but I'm all done, I just want to be with the people I served with," and out the door he went. Now, this is a man who needed no introduction, but was humble, but the last thing I'll say is he did two tours that you referred to, Bob, and the second tour he didn't have to do because he was well-established, he had done his first tour, and he did it anyway.
That's right.
He went to combat twice, which I know people had stayed in twenty years, and they had the option not to go back into combat. He did it twice, so, I mean, that's quite a.
Probably, most people agree, if he had taken those times.
That's correct.
And played baseball, he would have been right up there, would have legit home run hitters of all time, legit.
Think of the income and everything, he deferred because, well, this is very, very good stuff, Robert, and.
Might have been, might have been my turn at the bat, the book, there's so many great ones out there. That one might have, I'm going to find out, I'll get it to you if you get to, I've got it at home, I can't remember what it was, it was a great book, and there are a lot of stories I'm hearing, they overlap, but great stuff. And thank you again for all you're doing, most importantly.
Okay, last call for R S V P.
Great job, Bob.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys, thank you for your service.
Thank you very much. Good seeing you again.
Hopefully, we'll see you again later.
You will, you will, you will.
At the launch.
Yeah, thank you, guys, thank you very much.
On our agenda, number eight, Public Comment. Each week, we have Public Comment on our agenda, and now is that time, is there anyone out in Zoom waiting that would like to make any public comment today?
Love that name, Zoom.
I like it. I don't know what else to say, Colin. Director Cronin, do you have anyone for?
No, sir.
For Public Comment? Okay, last call for Public Comment. Seeing none, number nine, Old Business. I have no old business today. Number ten, Personnel Matters for Consideration.
Do you have anything?
Director, Commissioner.
Oh, we do.
We have two.
Yes, sir. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I will do the following, notice address change, move approval of the address change for Dustin Cohen to Dedham, Mass., effective eleven-one-twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Okay, the second one at the high school.
This is Norfolk County Aggie School.
Right, yes, there's a motion, a second, do you want?
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the first one.
And also, Norfolk County Aggie School, notice appointment of William Shaker as custodian for the rate stated, effective eleven-thirteen-twenty-three, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That concludes Personnel Matters for today. Number eleven, Payroll and Expense Warrants.
I don't have it, I'll move it, but I don't have it.
I don't have it either. I don't know why. Why don't we defer, and we'll go find it?
Okay.
Okay, motion to defer payroll expense warrants, we will get to it.
Give me a second, just a second. He's probably coming up now.
Okay, go ahead. We'll have a one-minute recess while we get the payroll expense warrant.
If I can find that book by Williams. I think that's, oh, here we go, yes, sir.
Okay, back to number eleven, Payroll and Expense. Commissioner Stady.
Chairman, I'd be very pleased to move the following for approval for the warrant list of November eighth, I'll move the following, twenty-four dash eighteen, Payroll of the County, the amount of one hundred fifty-five thousand, eight hundred ninety-seven dollars, forty-seven cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Next, eleven dash two-twenty-three, for Walston Recreational Facility Credit Card Payment, move approval for the payment of thirty-two thousand, four hundred six dollars, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote. Next.
Third, eleven dash two-twenty-three, Walston Recreational Facility Sales Tax, approval of the amount three thousand, eighty-two dollars, ninety-one cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
Fourth, eleven dash oh-two-twenty-four, Expense of the County, move the approval of five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred sixty-six dollars, sixty-six cents, so moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
It is a vote.
And finally, last one, twenty-four dash oh-six, wait, oh-five, sorry, Expense of the School, move approval of one hundred thirty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, nine cents, so.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote.
That concludes the warrant, Mr. Chairman.
Payroll and Expense Warrants, thank you.
You're welcome.
Number twelve, Report on American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one. Director Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good afternoon, Commissioners. We do not have any awards before you this week. We are tracking several that are at a lower level, and we probably should expect them in the next several weeks. This afternoon, I just wanted to introduce you to a memorandum that I'll be preparing for the Norfolk County Communities within the next week to get out. I think I mentioned that there's been a change from the U.S. Treasury vis-à-vis Congress that expands categories for eligible spending for ARPA to three new areas, emergency relief from natural disasters, transportation infrastructure, as well as community development block grant program expansion. Those three areas and how they work with the existing ARPA program will be part of the memorandum that'll be released to the communities quite shortly. We just learned about this action taken by the Treasury over the last several weeks. As I continue to shower praise on Clifton Larson, they mobilized quickly once the information was released to have a Zoom call with counties a couple weeks ago on the impact that these additional categories will have, providing more flexible spending options for communities. I think I mentioned last week, we expect some communities to have some interest, these categories seem to be more focused on urban areas or larger populations, so for the most part, it'll be just informational for many communities, as you know, we're almost three quarters of the way through our ARPA allotment, so many communities have already made their plans upon planning to spend money, but nevertheless, it'll go out within the next week. And that is all I have under item number twelve on your agenda, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, any questions, John, about the American Rescue Plan Act of two thousand and twenty-one? Okay, number thirteen, September Trial Balance Acceptance. In our packet is the September Trial Balance from the Treasurer. Do we have any questions? Assistant Treasurer here is on the call, I believe, now's the time to ask him. John.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, as Commissioner Stady, excuse me, Commissioner Shea indicated, your September balance is before you for acceptance. I would like to call out again our growing concerns about our position on revenue collections to date. On the third page of your respective trial balance, the Treasurer reports a variety of fees associated with registry activity to be below what would be a twenty-five percent collected benchmark as we approach one-third, to be one-quarter of the way through fiscal year twenty-four. These respective collections present an overall revenue picture that is approximately eight percent below benchmark. This early in the year is cause for concern. I will be studying some options for your consideration in the next several weeks as we approach the December thirteenth Advisory Board Meeting. By then, we hope to have the October trial balance within our grasp to take a better snapshot of where things are standing. But suffice to say, the economic indicators associated with interest rates and overall collection of revenue is suffering, and it's something we can't ignore. This trial balance again draws direct attention to several of the major drivers of that revenue for you to observe, so in cooperation with the Treasurer's Office, our fiscal team will come before you, as I said, within the next four weeks with some recommendations.
Any questions, Director Cronin?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, just to get, again, a better understanding of it, can you pinpoint where you're getting the eight percent reduction? I'm looking, I hope I'm looking at the right page.
Yes.
I see county tax, registry deeds.
Yep. So if you go to the bottom of that particular area.
Go ahead.
The treasurer reports the total budgetary general fund, all the way to the right percent collected year-to-date. You see it at seventeen point two six.
Right.
It ought to be twenty-five percent if you're doing it.
Okay, that's why I didn't.
Into September.
That's why I want to know where you got it from. So is there anywhere we could get a column put in to say where we should have been?
Sure.
Or you can't, I didn't know where you got the eight from. Okay, so we're at seventeen percent though.
Collected.
And we wanted to be at twenty-five.
More over.
Yeah, that's because why?
Well, I, I think we all recognize that interest rates play a very important part in the way the registry functions and volumes operate. When rates are low, people tend to buy more homes and be more active in the home purchase, home selling business as well as refinancing. And that, that business has been impacted. We do receive updates from a variety of different market sources that indicate, in fact, Norfolk County is in a slowdown with respect to housing sales and housing activity refine. It is a direct proportion to the economic indicators, including.
On the other hand, respectfully, respectfully, home prices have never been any higher. So you're making up for that a little bit by the number, the, the, you know, not the volume. Volume have gone down, but the hype prices have gone up.
I think you're, you're absolutely right. I think it's safe to say that Norfolk County's housing values have held, if not increased during this time period.
Right.
But folks are just less likely to be active in the transaction space, Commissioner State, because of the, the cost of the interest rate associated with that, so.
So looking at that, Mr. Chairman, and you are to a director, you know, if we continue to trend not where we should be, that's going to have an impact looking at our budget preparation for next year?
Both, sure. Yeah, I mean, next year, next year is certainly coming into focus as we end calendar year twenty-three. But more importantly, it will impact our operations this year.
This year.
And that's what I'll be reporting back to you in the next few weeks on some options.
Right.
And incidentally, I've taken the same information and I've shared it with the Chair of the Finance Committee and the Chair of the Advisory Board so they can see the activity. I don't like to drop it on them someday, you know, in December before the meeting. We are watching it. My compliments to Joe D and his staff. They, they alert us. And also Phil Iantosca, who, over the last several months, he and I have worked. So Phil is now producing some really good, he distills a lot of this information and provides it to us, to me in a way that summarizes some of the flashpoints that we're seeing. And Phil was calling out some of these revenue discrepancies as early as a month ago. So the team is working to keep an eye on things. It will not be a surprise to anyone. We hope to have a report to you shortly.
We have proven the motion would be to approve seventy-four million?
You're going to accept the September trial balance as presented by the Norfolk County Churchill.
Okay.
Any other questions about the trial balance dated nine thirty twenty-three?
I'll make a motion approved, actually accept.
Accept.
Except the trial balance of nine thirty twenty-three, I present.
Second.
Motion made in second to accept the trial balance as presented in the sheet from nine thirty twenty-three. All in favor? Aye. Aye, it is accepted. Seventy-four, zero, thirty-two, five, zero, zero, and thirty-four cents. Thank you. Bit openings, we have none today. Contract awards, none. Number sixteen, report of the county director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A few items for your consideration this afternoon. I'm happy to inform you that the new ARPA auditor has been selected. Jennifer Thompson from Capital Strategies has submitted a proposal, it'll be before you next week for approval. Jennifer comes to us on a familiar path, being a former town administrator in Norfolk County. She has joined the Capital Strategies group. She's very active with ARPA, preparing grants for a variety of communities in Massachusetts, as well as working in other counties for Level One Review. She's very experienced, very happy to help Norfolk County out over the next several months to backfill the services that Powers and Sullivan have been doing. They've agreed to the same financial terms that Powers and Sullivan had, so we're in good shape. That contract will be before you, Nancy tells me, next week. Just FYI, we plan to release the twenty twenty-four holiday posting shortly. Michelle has prepared it. I signed off on it. Bill Buckley will have it up on the website. As the commissioners know, we mimic the state calendar for holidays and dates and it will be posted shortly. I'd like to announce that the commissioners, to the commissioners, that the new fiscal specialist was hired this week, Mr. Will Robertson. Started on Monday. Will comes to us from Clean Harvest in the private sector. He was a buyer. He has a fair amount of experience in that space, which will be very beneficial to him in this role. If you're around this afternoon, you want to swing by, he sits right back there and be happy to say hello to you. But we're very happy he's with us. He'll be reporting to Nancy Rockwell as we continue our efforts to provide good service on procurement, contracts, payments, and so forth to the county departments. Couple of HR announcements. First, Norfolk County Medicare Open Enrollment. A representative will be on-site at the registry on November fourteenth from one to four P.M. It's a wellness fair. We encourage folks to join people at six forty on High Street at the lower level. So enjoy some apple cider and make a fall snack mix, but brought to you by the Medicare Open Enrollment Program. Michelle Lavadini sent out an all-users email this week, but just a reminder, UNAM short-term disability insurance is now being offered to eligible individuals. Please check your email. If you have any questions, please call her office. And then finally, we were given notice by, I just found the paperwork. Mayflower Health Group informed us through Blue Cross Blue Shield that one of their business associates known as NASCO, N-A-S-C-O, had a file sharing application exploited consistent with their electronics, excuse me, their technology security protocols. They have alerted us. Blue Cross Blue Shield and our carrier have notified affected policyholders by mail, U.S. mail. If you happen to have been involved in this release of information, which I'm not privy to exactly what it was, you will receive a letter to your home. This particular offer will include free credit monitoring services to impacted individuals of twenty-four months. And there's a toll-free number to call for individual questions. If any employees have any questions following this announcement, which they should have received by U.S. mail through this announcement today, please call Michelle McNulty's office, excuse me, Michelle Lavadini's office for more information. And that is all I have this afternoon. Thank you very much.
Any questions, Director Cronin?
Good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Don't be very long. Emergency items or topics that the chair did not reasonably anticipate. I have none. We have a regularly scheduled meeting next week.
Yeah.
And then the post on schedule will be meeting the following week, which is the day before Thanksgiving. Do you have any thoughts? I'd like to get them before next week. I believe we're going to have a meeting, but.
And you said we can move it to Tuesday?
I'm sorry.
Sure. Move it to Tuesday rather than Wednesday?
But we can certainly discuss that. I think there's some scheduling challenges on Tuesdays. But if you want to move it to a little later in the afternoon, that might work, but I can work through the chair on that.
I believe I want to meet that week, but.
Okay, I.
No, well, let's stick with that.
That's always kind of a, you know.
We got two weeks to look at it.
Yeah, okay, it's fine. It's fine. Nothing urgent. No, really, nothing urgent on my end. I will be traveling down to the MAFC conference as part of our job as first season of the Aggie School. And I'll give a little report next week.
That'll be great.
Looking forward to that. And if there's any way I could get through you, Mr. Chairman, of course, to have John or Robert get me info on this ride program. If he has cards, he said he could have cards or something. I'd be glad to. Like I said, I'll be hitting a few places and appearing and want to advocate. That's a great program. It's a great program. I've read that. What we can do. And the name of the book was The Kid.
Yeah.
It's a kid. It's a great book. It's a great book, great book.
My mother was a big, big Ted Williams fan.
Called Kid, The Immortal Life of Ted Williams, by Ben Bradley, Junior. With that, you want me to make a motion to approve adjourn? And now the clock is going to throw me off. The motion to adjourn, you said my phone is one fifty, not two fifty.
Okay, that's got to be adjusted, that clock. Please take note.
Yes.
I can't even read it, but good. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned.